This meeting is a public session of the Council Rock Board of School Directors. This meeting is being recorded by the Council Rock School District and may be recorded by members of the audience. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance with Devon Barclay. Where's Devon? You're allowed, Devon, ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the redeemed and blessed for all.
presentations we've had for musical talent at the Council Center.
That must be not because of the lack of shoes.
No, well, that has something to do with it, and the socks didn't match, something else too, but fantastic, Lori, thank you so very much.
Madam Secretary, may I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Brooks?
Here.
Mr. Byler?
Here.
Dr. Foster?
I'm here.
Mr. Grubb?
Present.
Mrs. McKessy?
Here.
Mrs. Sexton?
Present.
Mrs. Thomas?
Here.
Mr. Block?
Here.
Mr. Abramson?
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Klein, I'm going to start with the Superintendent's Report by bringing up our State Representatives Scott Petrie and Steve Santasiero.
We're happy to be here, welcome. We are here tonight to make a presentation, and actually, two presentations. The first presentation is to Joy McLendon, and it is in recognition of her service.
It's in recognition of your service to the district, and, you know, there are so many
aspects of what makes a great school district. And obviously, the faculty is an important part of it, but setting the course for the faculty and the curriculum and what they do to get through to the kids on a daily basis is a hugely important job. And, you know, when someone who has done such a great job doing that decides it's time to retire, it's obviously appropriate to pause and recognize that. But it's also a time to reflect on what a great job and impact you've had on the district, and how the district is truly going to miss your work. And so, you know, on behalf of the state legislature, and I think we can also speak for our colleague in the Senate, although that's the, from our perspective, the lower chamber, Senator McElhany, we would like to thank you for your service to the community, your service to Council Rock, and most importantly, your service to all the kids whose lives you've touched by virtue of your work here. And so, we bear with us this citation from the House that Scott and I have signed, as has the Speaker of the House, Mike Thursey, and the Chief Clerk, as well as a flag of our Commonwealth that we'd like to represent to you.
I just wanted to add, yeah, I guess I have a personal experience with the curriculum, and I can tell you, prepared my son in every way to be ready for junior high and high school and to be successful in life. But I think there's a secret that Council Rock has in their curriculum that other schools may not have, I don't know, because I only have experience with Council Rock, and that is that the student leaves elementary school with permanent friends. My son, particularly two teachers, is still in communication with those gentlemen, both, in this case, they both happen to be males. And I think that's special, and I don't know if you've put that, slipped that in somewhere, we're in the educational process and the curriculum, but for our children to walk away with, even as young adults, to have long-term mentors that still care about them, email them, and likewise respond back, that's a special, special piece, and I certainly thank you for that.
I just would like to say that the work that we've done over the years has not been done by me solely, but by the collective work of such phenomenal teachers and administrators and school board members. And so, I thank you for this, but I accept this on behalf of all of the students and teachers and administrators and school board members who have worked to make Council Rock a wonderful and fantastic place it is. So, thank you very much.
That was very gracious, and thank you. Andy, can we have a little bit of leeway here?
Please.
Because we'd like to make another presentation as well.
You'll need three minutes.
We're going to need longer than that. We brought Dave Letterman with us. We have a citation as well for you, Mr. Superintendent, to honor your service to this community and to this district, not only in the 11 years that you served as Superintendent, but your time before that as principal and in the school system. You know, Scott and I are privileged to represent some terrific communities. And one of the things that really sets those communities apart are the districts that serve the kids. And this district in particular is a great district for so many different reasons. And as Joy just said, and rightfully so, there are so many of you that have a hand in that, the school board certainly, administrators, the faculty. But it takes a leader to really chart the course. It takes someone with a vision who knows where he or she wants the district to go, and then will take the time to actually implement that vision and get everyone to buy in in a way that enables it to be enacted. And that leadership quality is something that is very rare. It's not something that, you know, is enjoyed by many people, and it's, you know, a testament to the few who have it. And certainly, over the years, you have demonstrated that time and time again by charting a course for this district and then making sure that the district actually lived up to it. And time and again, under your stewardship, that's exactly what Council Rock has done. And while Scott and I look forward to working with your successor, he has big shoes to fill, without question. And so, I would like to present to you a citation from our House that Scott and I and our colleague Bernie O'Neil have signed, as well as the Speaker of the House and the Clerk. And it is, I think, a fitting recognition of the work that you've done, Mark. And I know I speak for, I'm sure, everyone in this audience when I say thank you. Your contribution to Council Rock will stay with this district for many, many years to come. And as I said in talking about Joy, the impact you've had on the lives of these kids is something you can never truly measure, and that's your legacy, and you and your family should rightly be proud of that. So, thank you very much.
I am so honored, and I was really hoping that this would be an opportunity for you to do, give the citation to Joy and leave me out of it, because I do feel like every time Joy gets recognition, I step in and ruin her parade. Yes, we do, and so we will do this honorably and together, and I will say the same thing that Joy had. We all benefit from just an incredible group of people, from a wonderful community, from amazing administrators, from a very supportive board, and most particularly from great kids and great teachers who all make us look good on a daily basis. I am so honored that you both would do this for me, it was not expected. Also honored to have a former student sitting in the audience, Ken Bora, who, despite my recognition in fourth grade, still did very well by himself. Thank you both very much for coming and spending time, truly.
Mark, I'd like to add a couple of personal comments to what Steve said. First of all, I agree with everything Steve said. You know, when I enter your buildings, the atmosphere comes immediately from the principal, that captain of that building, of the ship that is sailing, and many of your principals, if not all, will greet the students as they enter each day and as they leave each day. I'm not so sure that happens around the state. And I think those principals become the foundation on which those schools then operate. And of course, on top of that, we have our superintendent, and a superintendent's job is not easy. Takes a lot of bullets along the way, takes a lot of criticism, but has to make decisions. It's a big school district, a lot of students, a big budget, and I think you've done a remarkable job. What I wanted to add was my thanks to you for bringing three really big issues to my plate to deal with. I remember we worked on some Middlebuck's Institute of Technology issues and funding issues, PlanCon, the audience may not know what that means, but the school board certainly knows what that means, and access. And I say it was really beneficial for me, because I'm not on the Education Committee in Harrisburg, and for me to understand those, but I was on the Appropriations Committee, and to understand those issues very intimately and how they actually work, or not work, as in those three instances, was important. And I know you really became a thorn in PDE's minds on a couple of those issues, particularly access, but you were right, and you questioned their numbers, and you made us go to bat for you, and it was really my pleasure. I want to thank you for that opportunity. It may sound odd for a legislator to say, "Thank you for allowing me to beat up on the Department of Education," but they were wrong. And hopefully, someday we get those issues resolved the right way so that your job becomes easier. And my best wishes to you, I hope you don't go too far away and that you stay involved. Thank you.
I'd like to thank Representatives Petrie and Santasiero for coming out. That means a lot to have you here. We know you're busy. We appreciate everything that you do on behalf of the district, on behalf of the kids. We've got a lot of work to do out there, so we appreciate you working hard for us.
Thanks.
Thanks, gentlemen. Mr. Klein, Council Superintendent's Report?
Need to collect myself here for just a second. So, there are a couple more things for us to do this evening, and all of them are great news and great opportunities to thank people that are important in our community. The next, traditionally, at this time in May, we recognize National Law Enforcement Week, and we bring in the people who really keep us safe and who have such a great partnership with the school district. And again, both Representatives talk about the culture in our area and the culture in our schools. And one of the reasons that that culture is built that way is because of the relationships we have with many of the members of our community, our boards, supervisors, management managers. But one of the true things that I feel proud of is the relationship we have with our police departments, between the SROs and our high schools, and the opportunities we have to interact with Upper Makefield, Newtown Borough, Newtown Township, and Northampton Township. It truly is a pleasure to work with these folks. They are never too busy to answer a question, never too busy to investigate suspicious vehicle, taking pictures of kids, and never too busy to give us an answer when we have those concerns. And I think it is testimony to each of those departments about how they react to us, and we very much appreciate the time and effort. And so, during this National Law Enforcement Week celebration, it's our opportunity and our privilege to bring in members of our police departments and thank them on behalf of the school district. So, I have certificates, I'm going to walk down, and we're going to call them up a group at a time.
So, for Newtown Borough, I don't think the chief is here, correct? So, Jim, I would ask you to come up on behalf of Newtown Borough. Is Colleen here too?
Yes.
Oh, good. Okay, so, Colleen Rosenfeld and Jim Wernick from Newtown Borough Police. Let's see, from Newtown Township, I'm looking around. Ah, okay. So, the chief's not here either?
No, I'm right there.
Sounds good. Okay, so Lieutenant Matthews is here, and I didn't, Officer Hurst, and is Sergeant Pence here?
Sergeant Pence is right.
Okay, good. And Officer Khan is not here. And on behalf of Upper Makefield Township, Chief Mark Schmidt.
I just want to take one minute and also recognize, although Jody's not here, we have a fantastic relationship with two officers from those forces, Officer Renee Hurst, who serves at Council Rock High School North, and Officer Jody Khan, who serves at Council Rock High School South. The opportunities we have to interact with school resource officers extend far past just the mundane things they occasionally have to do in terms of dealing with issues in school. They are the public persona of the police force in each of those high schools, and they help build relationships and they help work with kids so that in many cases, we don't have to deal with them on a more specific level with the police, but they can help us intervene and talk through some issues. And we are so appreciative to the two townships to help us put these school resource officers in our schools. So, on behalf of the school district, Renee and also police conveter Jody are appreciation for that work. I know I speak for the high school principals and all the folks at the two high schools.
Finally, but certainly not least, so this is a really last but not least issue, we have the opportunity this evening to work with the Council Rock Education Foundation and Suzanne Ray to award this, the 14, the 15, 16 grants. Wow, it's already 15, 16 school years. So, Mrs. Ray, would you come forward, and we'll do the grant awards, please?
All right, thank you, Mr. Klein. Thank you, members of the school board. The Council Rock Education Foundation is thrilled to be here tonight to introduce the teachers who are this year's recipients of our 2015 Innovative Learning Grants. It's important to note, especially for people who may be unfamiliar with the Education Foundation, that we are a nonprofit organization separate from the school district. The funds we're distributing tonight have been raised through charitable donations from companies and individuals throughout the community who believe in the importance of public education and want to support our mission of providing innovative educational programs for Council Rock students that are beyond the scope of the regular school budget. So, this evening, we're pleased to distribute $35,000 in grants to teachers and classrooms throughout Council Rock. At this time, I'm going to call up Allison McGann, our co-president of the Education Foundation's Board of Directors, and she'll be distributing the checks as I give a brief description of the grants that will be funded by CREF in the 2015-16 school year. If you wouldn't mind, please, holding your applause till the end, till all grantees have been called forward, and we'll take a quick photo, and then you can get on with your business. So, thank you. First, we have the Reading, Writing, and Robotics Grants. That's Cheryl Hills and Lauren McCusker from Goodno Elementary, and Mary Doherty and Kim Bender from Churchville Elementary. A team of kindergarten teachers and math specialists at these two elementary schools will utilize B-BOTs robotic technology to foster learning in all academic areas, including problem-solving and actually developing basic coding skills. The photos are the hardest. Next, we have the National Geographic Bee. Jean Lindris, Rebecca Rice, and Elise Siola, I'm sorry if I pronounced that wrong, from Rolling Hills Elementary. Participation in the National Geographic Bee will augment the social studies curriculum for fourth to sixth graders through a blended learning approach. They will be utilizing traditional classroom modalities and real-time interactive collaborative learning and problem-solving. And the National Geographic Bee is very much like the National Spelling Bee, but for geography. And we are, this is a collaborative venture with the Home and School Association of Rolling Hills. Third is Goodno Garden. Julie Crowell and Lindsay Shalala from Goodno Elementary. This grant will be creating an interactive learning space to extend students' learning and encourage teachers to develop innovative learning opportunities for students in grades kindergarten through six. A collaborative, this is also a collaborative program with the Goodno PTO and the entire Newtown community. This is a three-phase program they've been raising funds for. We're very thrilled to be a part of Phase Two and Three, and I'm sure they'll be, in the future, working out with the community for any further involvement that people might want to contribute. Number four, Sky's the Limit, with Laura Lutton of Newtown Middle School. Through this grant, students will be using cutting-edge technology, which is the next star tele star telescopes and thermal energy software, to expand the study of near-earth objects and explore astronomical occurrences. Newtown Middle School. Next grant is STEM Expansion, Renee Devlin and Julie Eastburn. This is an all-district-wide grant for all 10 elementary schools. Through this grant, we'll be expanding the number of teachers and students involved with teaching STEM concepts. Tim Duke is also involved. I'm sorry, Tim, for not introducing you.[627.29][627.29](laughter) Tim is our STEM specialist, for those of you who don't know. This is going to be expanding students' interest in STEM courses, careers, and opportunities as they move forward in their education. Next grant is the One School, One Book Program, Lisa Weiss of Wrightstown Elementary. This project builds literacy skills at home and school through a nationally-recognized program, bringing together school communities through a shared reading experience. Students, family, and all staff will participate in the reading of a carefully-selected book and activities that are developed through the school and the community to promote and enrich reading and the learning experience. And next is the STEM Club Makerspace Pilot Program. This is a collaborative program between Wrightstown Elementary and Goodno Elementary, so we have quite a number of people. Charlene Bora, Wrightstown Elementary spearheaded the program. Mary Ann Malicious, Noel Marcus, and Angela Walsh from Goodno Elementary are the three teachers involved in the STEM Club at Goodno Elementary. And what makes this grant ever more special, three students from Goodno Elementary assisted in writing the grant, and we would like to call them up as well. Bella Carpenterier, Kiera Snyder, and Marissa Kellen. Can you join us up there?[697.01][697.01](applause) There you go. Good picture.[706.82][706.82](laughter) All right. That was special. Thank you. Literature Buddies. This next grant is with Nancy Adams and Lisa Loasa from Newtown Elementary. It's an innovative, intergenerational literacy program. I'll say that again, an innovative, intergenerational literacy program. This pilot project will establish a multi-generational book club. It utilizes books to read, reading and reading to cultivate both a relationship and love of literature between members of the Gloria Day Living Home and Newtown first-grade students. Next is the Hand Chimes in the Music Classroom, Nanette Lutz from Holland Elementary. His program will implement the use of hand chimes in the music classroom to fulfill multiple curriculum goals at once, from teaching music literacy concepts to building student confidence and fostering collaboration between students and classes. Next, we have the Culinary Kids Grant, Judy Holt and Heather Wade from Hillcrest Elementary. This grant will provide a specialized culinary program for students with low-incidence disabilities, fostering both their independence and interest in the culinary arts. Our final grant is the 2015 Robert H. Winters Memorial Grant. It's in honor of Bob Winters, the longtime Council Rock Administrator, who was instrumental in the resurrection of the Education Foundation back in 2005. Bob's family couldn't be with us tonight, but Mark Klein has offered to help present this grant in their absence.[800.69][800.69](laughter) So this grant is presented to the STEM Flight and Rocketry Club, Andrea Mangold at Holland Elementary. Using a plan developed as part of the Pennsylvania Space Grant Consortium, students will learn about flight dynamics by building and testing a variety of aircraft, and they will gain an understanding of the physical laws governing flight and the engineering experimentation process. So please join me in congratulating these teachers for their dedication and challenging[827.82][827.82](applause). I think we need one of those panoramic photos for this one. But I did want to just say, I'm thanking the teachers for your dedication and for challenging and inspiring your students with these innovative programs. It is beyond what you are asked to do. This is extra and above, and we really appreciate your expertise and your innovation. So, thank you. Have a good night.[868.12][868.12](applause) Can we go now? Get out of here.[874.25][874.25](laughter)
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Great job, everyone, and in particular, thanks to Council Rock Education Foundation that allows us to run some of these extra programs.[889.62][889.62](laughter) So, Mr. Block, just a couple of quick announcements. The first is, in recognition of the Memorial Day holiday, schools are closed on Monday. If you weren't able to hear that, that means kids will come into school on Monday, and we'll do the best we can. Mrs. McGann, Allison, do you want to speak about your two other programs that are coming up, foundation programs? I'll save some of my time, too, on that.
Yes. We have two things going on at the moment. One is our teacher recognition program. Anyone who is looking for a wonderful gift for a special teacher, staff member of any kind, administrator, can make a donation to the Education Foundation, and a student-designed card is sent to the person who's being honored, recognizing their service, and it also has a personal message area, so that your own personal message can go to those people. With one donation, you can recognize multiple people. You can go to the website, www.creducationfoundation.org, and click on our teacher recognition program link. The other event that is coming up on June 3rd is our Outstanding Community Partner Award Reception. That, in there, we will be honoring Mr. Mark Klein and Mrs. Joy McLendon for their service to the community and to the school district, of course. It will be held at 5:30 PM at The Fuge in Wormminster. Those tickets are also available online on our website, and we hope the entire community is invited. We hope the community will come out and help us to recognize and honor Mark and Joy's accomplishments. We're very excited to have such extraordinary people to honor this year. And I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Superintendent.[1025.81][1025.81](applause) Thank you, Allison. Thank you, Mr. Klein. We're going to move to public comment now. Public comment is an opportunity for members of the public to address the board. We would ask that you limit your comments to no longer than three minutes. Please consider the fact that there may be young children in the audience who are watching this broadcast live on CRTV when speaking. It is our goal to maintain a respectful environment so that members of our community have an equal opportunity to address the board without interruption. While the board welcomes your ideas and will consider them in deliberating an issue, we may not respond to your comments or your questions. First, we have Steve McGill.
So, Steve McGill, Holland, PA. As you just stated, Mr. Block, the board has a goal of maintaining a respectful environment to members of the community at these meetings. I would hope that the board members would maintain a respectful manner when they are also outside the meetings, so that they represent the district to the community in a respectful manner as well. Thank you.[1093.94][1093.94](applause)
Next, I've got Maggie Ortigerow. I apologize if I got that wrong.
You got it, Meg.
All right.
Thank you. You want me to hit the? Good evening. My name is Maggie Ortigerow. I'm the parent of two Council Rock students at Hillcrest, as well as a graduate of Council Rock High School in the class of 1998. A few things about Tuesday's election were off to me. I have faith in the democratic process, especially at the local level. So when I saw that significant, deeply American process being manipulated, I became concerned. The dump Grup signs that sprang up a few days before the election were the first sign that something was off, that a smear campaign had officially begun. It doesn't matter to me which side engages in this behavior. It's wrong. I'm a Democrat. Mr. Grup, a Republican, but those differences don't change the standards of decent behavior. Then on Election Day, I was confronted at the door to our polling place by a man who handed me what appeared to be a Republican ballot. He explained that they were really trying to get rid of, get Gerald Grup out of office. When I didn't immediately agree with his statements, he became agitated, a bit confrontational, and certainly insulting, continuing to try and argue. I like to have all of the information when I make a judgment call, not just the one side that someone else wants me to know. When I finally proceeded into the building, I felt slightly shaken by the unexpected confrontation. Inside, I was handed both Democratic and Republican ballots. But wait, I already had the Republican ballot, didn't I? As it turns out, not exactly. I had a fake, but while making a ballot that suits your interests is certainly okay, designing that ballot to look almost exactly like the actual Republican ballot in layout, font, and even color is deceptive. The clear attempt to trick people into voting for someone else was disturbingly dishonest. In their fervor to unseat Mr. Grup, these people had crossed lines that affected the election's integrity. Those who paid for the unofficial ballot put only their initials on it, which makes me think they know that what they did was at least morally questionable. The signs were equally mysterious in origin. Whoever made these choices needs to take a hard look in the mirror. Actions like the ones I've just described poison the democratic process, and when you poison the process, you poison the result. Is that really the legacy that you want to leave behind? The dishonesty and manipulation and half-truths? It doesn't seem worth your integrity. What reason is there for all of this nastiness between grown adults? It feels a great deal more like a personal vendetta that has pushed its way into the public sphere than it does an honest election campaign. I should not have to remind anyone here that this is a professional setting, that we all have a common goal in ensuring the success of our students and maximizing the excellence of a Council Rock education. But after that election experience, it is clear that some of us have forgotten that the first way we do that is by modeling good behavior ourselves. Thank you.[1263.33][1263.33](applause)
Next, I have Fran Lerner Grup.
Fran Lerner Grup, Holland, wife of Gerald Grup, school board director. This past Tuesday was primary election day. Several people were on the ballots for seats on the school board. School board elections should be about children, education, and fiscal responsibility to the citizens of the school district. This has not been the case in the past two weeks. I have witnessed firsthand how ugly people can be with negative campaigning. Negative campaign signs were posted in my area with my name on it. I happen to teach preschool in that area and was concerned how it would be received. People were appalled and told me they wanted to take down the signs. I told them not to. Then detestable letters spouting untruths were mailed to area residents. On Election Day, phone calls were made to community members in those voting districts, continuing to malign with vitriol. Imagine how much time, effort, and money was spent to be hateful to my husband. I feel truly sorry for these two men who are behind this. I am sure that their wives, children, and grandchildren must be really proud of them. One is a former school board member who thrives on being contentious. The other, one would think that he would have something better to do with his time and money, like take the three-year-old tarps off of his roof and fix the roof on his house on Bridgetown Pike and Watergate, than go after someone who is committed to children in public education. Now, a community member who is well-known to the school board, she speaks at length at public comment at every school board meeting, and the current school board director have joined forces with these vile, hate-filled men. I have been told that the school board director has made it its life's mission to see that my husband is not re-elected to the school board, no matter what it takes. This school board director is putting forth so much effort into this. Can this director continue to effectively serve the children and members of the Council Rock community? This school board director was handing out phony Republican sample ballots at the polls on Tuesday. Oh, and this school board member was a Republican committee person. This school board director made loads of recorded phone calls to constituents not in the voting region in which they serve. I truly hope that this school board director did not use their position on the board to obtain phone lists, like PTO lists or school directories, to make these phone calls. Lastly, and I was not going to mention this, but I will, I am extremely proud of my husband for being the bigger person and rising above these vile and nasty people. He may not be perfect, but he has tried to serve the Council Rock community with integrity. His mission is the public education of all of our children and responsibility to the community. After all, isn't this what the Council Rock Board of School Directors should be about? Thank you.[1471.26][1471.26](applause)
Next, Deborah Ellen Pellon.
Hi, thank you. I'm Debbie Pellon, and I live in Newtown Township, and I have sent a few emails to everybody that you probably got this week, asking that in the new plans for Newtown Middle School, if we could consider putting a track in. We have 170 kids that share that join the track team. It is one of the only non-cut sports in the middle schools, and actually, truthfully, in the high school as well. They take everybody. Mr. Hunter does a phenomenal job, and it doesn't matter if you run a six-minute mile or 16-minute mile, he engages everybody. He is not looking for a track similar to the high schools at all. As a matter of fact, he put forth some numbers, which I aired and sent to Doug as detailer, so he never got them. So I do apologize. I didn't know he was a full name. But Doug now does have, he does now have the correct numbers. So I'm sorry that didn't get passed through in a timely manner. But I just think that it engages a lot of kids. It gives us an advantage when we show up at these meets, but more importantly than that, the whole school would use it for all these presidential testings. They do all these elite tests now at the schools. And I was lucky enough to be at the track meet last week where all three middle school track coaches were there, and Mr. Hunter said, "Tell them what you're thinking." And I explained, and they go, "We take one for all three middle schools." They said, "We share tennis courts now. We're used to sharing facilities. This is not an issue where it goes. We would just love to have it. It gives our kids an advantage." They called the people at Log College in Wormminster. They got all the specs, which Doug now has, and I apologize if it was detained, of exactly what kind of track it is. It's just a simple gravel track, although I do understand it does have drainage issues and impervious issues. But if it can't be done, it can't be done, but I would just ask that it be reconsidered. It's a huge percentage of the kids at the middle school. I think it's just great that Mr. Hunter does such a great job, including everybody, and maybe the kids could really even get a lot better if they weren't, they're running on the football field. So there's a lot of injuries, I guess, with the sprinters that come into that. So, thank you.[1612.51][1612.51](applause)
Is there any further public comment? Haven't seen you in a while. Welcome back.
Melissa Williams, Wrightstown, family in Holland. Election Day was fun. Not really. My phone went crazy. What are the fake ballots being handed out? So I'm just going to read a couple of things I looked up in the Code of Ethics for membership to the board. B, that the public expects my first and greatest concern to be in the best interest of each and every one of these young people, without distinction as to who they are or what their background may be. H, to welcome and encourage active cooperation by citizens, organizations, and the media of communication in the district with respect to establishing policy on current school operation and proposed future developments. I, finally, to strive, step by step, toward ideal conditions for most effective school board service to my community, in a spirit of teamwork and devotion to public education as the greatest instrument for the preservation and perpetuation of our representative democracy. Nobody else wants to mention names, but you all know me. Ms. Sexton went above and beyond. Her behavior was absolutely deplorable. I don't care who you like, who you don't like. Mr. Grup and I argue quite a bit. No one, no one in our community should act that way, certainly not someone sitting at that table. I was horrified, and because I've been to a lot of these meetings, different people called us, my husband and I, asking us, "What the heck is going on? You looked like a bunch of idiots, and it's because of you, Ms. Sexton, and your actions that you chose to take." Out of the mouths of babes, my nine-year-old, who's YouTubeed these videos, so chose these words carefully, Ms. Sexton, you should be ashamed of yourself. And maybe, if you can't do that teamwork, you should step down now and leave.
Nancy Carroll, Newtown Borough. The malicious, slanderous, and false attack by Mrs. Grup on my conduct...
It's Grup with two E's in the spelling.
I'm sorry, I'd rather not have an argument that's in public comment in the audience, so...
Is totally false. As they paint the brush against all those that... As they paint the brush against all those that are for someone other than Mr. Grubb. I was not involved in anything that went on. As a matter of fact, I haven't talked to that school board member since he attacked me in the 90s. So, malicious, false, and slanderous. I came here tonight, I wanted to thank Mark and Joy, all the law enforcement people, the state reps, the children who got the awards, and the teachers, and the craft organization that supported it. I also noticed on the agenda that there was no board discussion items, so I had one suggested. Now that I see what's going on, I understand why there was none tonight, but I suggested for the next meeting. On January 8th, there was a report on the Technology Committee. I will read from the minutes. Mr. Frederson reported that in the past, an informal committee consisting of Mr. Grubb, Ms. McKenzie and Thomas, and four or few members of the committee, would meet throughout the year. He looked to formalize this process and have two to three meetings a year, beginning in February or March, to review and discuss the summer projects and meet whenever the board would like the committee to meet. If more than four board members attend, it would be advertised. It was further noted that detailed minutes of the meeting would be kept on file. Mr. Klein will set up the first meeting and bring it back to the board and make a decision as to whether the board wants to have the meetings advertised or have an ad ah committee. I guess it doesn't surprise you that I suggested this be a board committee that is open to members of the public and where the minutes and a report is due to the board and anyone who wants to participate. Thank you very much.
I need to make a clarification, Mr. Block. The speaker spoke to the fact that she and I have not communicated since the 90s. Want to be aware, I didn't come to the board until 2000. This is a standard pattern that I've seen, where numbers are skewed, changed, or misconstrued, and put forth as bad.
Okay. Thank you. So I came in 2000. Thanks, Jerry.
Jerry, she wasn't talking about you.
Listen, listen.
She wasn't talking about you.
Listen.
She wasn't talking about you.
No, Patty, I haven't recognized, we're going to get on to the meeting, thank you.
I'd be happy to.
Okay, so we're going to move item number one up in front of the consent agenda, if that's okay with you, Mr. Klein. We're going to go straight to personnel actions, please. So if I could have Kyle, please read item number one under items for board approval.
I move to approve the consent agenda, items A through I.
I'm sorry, not back, under items for board, item one. So we're going to skip the consent agenda, we're going to go up to...
I move to approve the personnel actions as contained in the attachments to this agenda.
There we go. A second?
Second.
Thank you.
I would say questions for Ms. Trillie, which is normally what I do, but I'm going to take at least the beginning part of this, and before I start, I'm going to ask Mr. Desco to introduce, because we have two folks here in the audience that we want to recognize will be assuming new roles next year. So, Mr. Desco, if you would introduce Keith.
As many of you may know, Lee Howsline, who has served as the curriculum coordinator in the area of music for a number of years, is retiring this year, and we recently went through a process to select his successor, and I'd like to introduce Keith Rudat. Keith is a music instructor in the area of instrumentals at Newtown Middle School. He's been there since 1998, had a couple of years of prior experience in a couple of other districts in the general area, has held several leadership roles in the county with county music and festivals that we offer, and he has graciously accepted upon your approval to move into the role of the district curriculum coordinator for music. Keith?
Thanks, Keith.
Thank you, Howard. Very pleased with our service capacity, and just again, I just wanted to thank Lee Howsline for all the service to our school district, representing music, promoting music education.
Second on the personnel agenda, among many different items, is our recommendation for the new director of elementary education. This has been a rather complex and somewhat difficult process, just because of all of the change that has been coming forward, but we are extremely pleased tonight to recommend to the board candidacy of Mr. Joseph McClay for the director of elementary education position. Joy, may I ask you to speak? Carmy?
Thank you. After an extensive process that began in December and ended just a few weeks ago, we could not be more pleased to welcome Mr. McClay to our team. Mr. McClay was gracious and patient and endured an extensive and rather strenuous process that involved our curriculum coordinators, administrators, teachers, support staff, and three different interview rounds, one of which consisted of several hours of interviewing with different teams. Mr. McClay joins our team with, we're greatly appreciative to have him come and join us, and I know that members of the interview committee have joined us tonight as well to welcome him.
So if we could have members of the interview committee just stand and be recognized for the many hours of time and work that they put in? I also want to recognize Mrs. McKessy and Ms. Brooks, who also served in the last two rounds of that team. There were as many as forty around us in one night, not all of them came this evening, obviously, but they're all here in spirit. So I would ask that the board consider the personnel agenda now, and then at the conclusion of that, if everything works well, we'll ask Mr. McClay to come forward, introduce his family, and just welcome, get our welcome.
You know, confusing people, this is going to be for people. They're going to see Joy's name, they're going to ask for Joy McLendon, they're going to be connected to Joseph McClay, and they're going to be totally confused.
At least his name isn't Joy.
A minute, a second, Keith, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. McKessy?
Yes.
Mrs. Sexton?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Block?
Yes.
Mr. Abramson?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Bylick?
Yes.
Dr. Foster?
Yes.
Welcome. Congratulations.
During the interview process, I probably mentioned a couple times, just to help last I feel. Mark wanted me to introduce my family. I have my son Garrett, and my wife Colleen, my in-laws Jerry and Diane.
That's a soccer player, right?
That's my soccer player.
There you go.
Yes.
I hear he's good.
Mr. Block's son played against you a couple weeks ago.
Remember that. Okay, I know he's good.
Working in Council Rock is one of the reasons why I'm blessed, I know it, and so to have the opportunity to serve in another capacity like this, it's unbelievable, and honestly, it hasn't sunk in yet. I know it'll take a couple days, and I'm getting to know Dr. Frazier. I know that we don't have common rooting interests in professional football teams, but we do have something in common. We are going to be following excellent people who've done significant work for the Council Rock community, and like him, I'm very excited, I'm very thankful, and I'm going to work very hard. Thank you. We are, as a school district, Joe, equally excited to have you in that role. I do, I can't do this, however, without saying to the Mooringham Welsh community that we recognize that in moving some of you up here to a position of leadership over all of our elementary schools, that the Mooringham Welsh Elementary School takes a significant hit. We have some great plans for that school, so that it remains intact, but anytime we move a sitting principal of that caliber up into central office, as we did to Joy, as we did to Barry, it becomes a problem in terms of succession planning. So we will announce that succession planning tomorrow to both schools, and we expect to be able to put things right very quickly, but we certainly recognize that for the Mooringham Welsh community, this is two principals in two years, and a third one to be in next year. But we thank you for your legacy at Welsh and at Rolling Hills, and we look forward to working with you. And so, the next part of this evening's meeting is for Garrett to juggle twenty-eight times with his head up front.
I thought we were going to see if he was going to sit on the roof if we can't balance the budget.
You don't want to sit on the roof.
Well, let's just start with getting him to the front table. So we'll move now to the consent agenda. Ms. Brooks, if you could please read the motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda, items A through I as contained in the attachments to the agenda subject to audit.
Second. Questions for any member of the team whose item's on the consent agenda, please?
I may have some questions, I've got to remember what's on the consent and what's elsewhere. So the ENRNO, in the contract, it says that they can use our logo for their advertising, and I assume that's only allowed during the term of the agreement, that once the agreement ends, that right to use our logo ends as well?
Dr. Foster, let me find that provision. Where are you looking?
I don't have it in front of me, I looked at it at home. It's, you know, it's such a sort, it's six, maybe, logo authorization, item six, it's on the first page.
Yes, that is an affirmative authorization that survives only until the end of the term of the agreement.
Okay. And then, I know we've talked about this company before, and that they provide us, I guess, a discount in taking our access to electricity drops during peak demand, right? Something like that.
Yes.
So, but the thing that I wonder about in the agreement, just out of curiosity, is I think under item two, it basically says that we have access to their solutions. It doesn't really define what their solutions are. So in terms of what the demand containment is, at least in this agreement, it's not really defined. So is that defined elsewhere, where the containment happens? It just isn't on these couple of pages that I have.
There is an actual attachment which lists each school and talks about what the actual estimated capacity of containment will be at each school.
Okay.
Dr. Foster, it's set forth on the statement of work...
Okay.
...which follows the actual contract.
Okay, no, thanks. And then in this pile, trying to see what else is here.
And also on the program rule attachment A, which is called emergency load response program, so that sets forth the nuts and bolts of the program as well.
Okay, thanks very much. That's it for me.
Mr. Grubb?
Mr. Cox, I'm sorry, in the section six, logo authorization, I believe that the last sentence really is immaterial to the contract and should be struck, because it's legally not true. As a public entity, we don't have the right to limit the use of our logo or our name. We don't hold right to those, and this contract speaks to the fact that we own all right title and interest, and had we done that, so our, as a public...
Mr. Grubb, I'm sorry, where are you?
Logo authorization, section six.
In the initial contract?
Page two of the initial contract. Logo authorization for ENRNO, same section that Mr. Dr. Foster had asked about. We don't own right title to our name. If we did, Council Rock Senior Center wouldn't be there, because it's not part of our property. So we don't own, as a public entity, we can't own copyright or trademark our name or logo. Is this correct? Well, Mr. Klein, I ask, I look at you, because your other practice outside of here is as an intellectual property attorney.
For eleven years, you've been talking, and we've been talking about trademarking. The CR is not unique enough in the way that we have built it, and in fact, if we tried to trademark it to Colorado Rockies, we probably could pitch a pit, so, no, we don't have an identifiable copyright or trademark. You might have common law one on either one, but we don't have one. But I don't disagree with Rock, it's just a simple process of saying, you can use Council Rock in your literature to say, you've joined in.
That's fine, I just wanted a clarification, because someone earlier this week had pointed out to me that using the Council Rock logo outside of the actual business of Council Rock was illegal, and I was concerned about that, and then I note here that it's in a contract, and after having it researched, it is not illegal.
But the district here isn't saying that it has, that it...
It says it's the owner.
Right, but it's not saying that it's...
I'll accept a clarification, I just wanted to...
Yeah, it's not saying that the district has exclusive rights to the words Council Rock School District or anything like that. It's just saying in the contract, you can refer to us on your website, and we will not have a problem with that during the term of the agreement.
Terrific, I just wanted a clarification, because someone had pointed out to me something that was incorrect earlier this week. Thanks, Mark.
Any other discussion? Mr. Bylick, anything?
Yeah, well, I'll be voting for everything but the item G, approval of the treasures I think that's commonplace, though.
Just want to make sure.
Thank you.
May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Abramson?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Bylick?
With the exception of item G, approval of treasures report, yes.
Dr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Grubb?
Yes.
Mrs. McKessy?
Yes.
Mrs. Sexton?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Block?
Yes. Move to item two, Mr. Bylick, please.
I move to approve the renewal of the contract with Chartwell's to provide food services for the 2015-2016 school year, with a surplus guarantee of $76,201, and lunch prices remaining the same as in 2014-2015 school year.
A second?
Second.
Thank you.
Questions for Ms. Reinhardt?
I had a, so this is on Chartwell's, I had a comment, and maybe a question, a request, that's it.
You can direct your comment or question to anywhere to comment or request anybody else to...
Thank you so much. So what I had heard, you know, we would all struggle with the new USDA guidelines, right? And so, you know, the goal, whether you buy into it or not, of reducing sodium, reducing fat, getting more whole grains, those kind of things, it's actually hard to get children to eat well, any parent knows that, and yet there's been a lot of energy with some of the PTOs and some of the parents to try to do better, and so they have the desire to work with Chartwell's to do that, and so that marketing capability that's part of this contract, which would be a point of contact for those PTOs and parents who want to help show that these foods can actually be tasty, is a good thing, but what I had heard, what I had heard is that the activities that occurred the past year were kind of spread out, because we have so many schools, and so, and there wasn't enough time for them when they did happen. So there might be an event to, and I'm just making up an example, I can't remember the details, it was like this special soup or fruit smoothie or whatever that was healthy, the kids loved it, but they didn't actually have enough time to eat it, and they had to rush off to class, and so it was partially a success, partly a failure, and then there weren't enough of the events to have any kind of momentum. And so I was thinking back to what I remember in knowing someone who used to market credit cards. You know, they send those ridiculous mailers to your house, and they have different fonts and different envelope sizes, and they track which ones of those are working and which ones aren't, and they have a giant matrix, you know, that figures out what... And they have a giant matrix, you know, that, that figures out what, what's getting the highest response rate. And so it seems to me if we could just focus this effort on some certain places in the district and kind of pile it, it would be less dilute and, and maybe we can make more progress and compare what's working and what's not. So it's just my feedback.
Yes.
I know there are people that, that, that want to interface and make it better, and it's great that there's still that opportunity.
And I appreciate those comments. Uh, I just wanted to offer that Skip Dano and also Joe Torwartsky from, um, Chartwell's is here tonight, that they can add into anything that I have to say. But this was the first year that we started moving this way. Uh, at the same time, we had a advisory committee made up of staff members, students, and also parents. And the discussion you just had, we had, actually had the same discussion today. How can we make this better? How can we communicate better? Um, we've been told now that we should go to the parent advisory council early in the year. Get them engaged, get the PTAs engaged, and really look at what we're doing. This was the first year we tried it. And I will tell you, it brought enthusiasm out. I think Skip will talk about, um, the most recent, I think it was a pasta type, uh, event, and 35 children, uh, signed up for it. And by the end, there was 135 children there because of the excitement that got in the room and everything else. And we are trying to figure out how to keep that moving, and we're gonna work on that. Um, the advisor committee's very much engaged in this. We had a great discussion today again. Uh, we brought it, the principals' meeting earlier this year, and, uh, I think you're gonna see it continue to move forward. The advisory committee's gonna stay together. And I think we're moving forward, and I think it's gonna get better. Just the information that's shared, uh, is gonna improve it. Now, Skip, you can talk about-
Thank, thank you, Mr. Reinhardt. And, and you're correct. On the days when we ran the promotions, it was a, a pretty exciting place in the cafeteria. The kids were really excited about it. And whenever we did something special and the marketing manager was there and set up out in the, in the dining room as opposed to through the cafeteria line, it really became a special event. And there may have been times when maybe there wasn't enough time for the students to enjoy the entire promotion because more kids were participating and, 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 uh, and what we tried to do is we, it was some of the promotions, our marketing managers trying to train our, uh, school leads and managers in each school to carry on when, when she's not there. So she runs it, establishes the template for it to go forward after that. But, but I think you're right. I think we need to communicate a little bit better, uh, to work with, with the committee that we were talking about today to, uh, improve communications back to the parents and to the students to make sure they know when we're running these promotions and to run them, uh, as often as possible and, and build that excitement. So it isn't just excitement on the first day is gonna have the, the ripple effect where they're gonna buy lunch even on the days when we don't have the promotion. That's the goal. And, uh, and I was happy with what we did this year. We did a lot of, we did something every month. We did a lot of, of different ideas. Uh, of course, when we won't run one, it isn't just in one school. If we run a promotion, I think we're running, what, what are we running now, Joe? The sub, the make your own sub? Make your own sub, which is popular, but we run it in 10 different, 10 different schools throughout the month of May. So it, it, it is a promotion that carries forward. We, we do, we do it in all the schools. We don't just single out, you know, an elementary school and run it there. We do it in all the elementary schools and in the middle school in some cases. But yeah, we, it was a good first year, but the process has to improve to improve the communications back to the parents and the students for sure.
Okay, thanks. I have a question. Uh, this serves elementary and middle schools, correct?
The agreement is K to 12, correct, Bob?
Yeah, it's K to 12.
Yeah.
It's just that the high schools are not in this, uh, national school lunch program, but they still get served through Chartwell's.
Okay. What, I, I don't quite understand the importance of the marketing, uh, to, to kids. Can you just explain to me the benefit of it? My, my assumption is-
I'll take, okay.
We're there to feed the kids, give them an opportunity to eat a meal at a reasonable price, right? Do we make money on the meals? We make a profit on it, so we're looking to boost our profits through marketing to the children.
We, the surplus that you saw there is the guaranteed surplus that we should be able to make in that year. We are not a profit motive organization. It's really sometimes a break even, but you should have capital to be able to support the equipment and things such as that. When you think of, uh, the marketing person, we put it in place there because of the new rules on our limitations and what we can serve the children. Everything from their, any cookies are now low fat and items such as that. We can no longer, uh, serve other snacks that we used to be able to serve. So this marketing person is in there trying to show how you can, um, identify new foods and healthy foods and try to get the children to adapt to it. I think it's been very important to us, and, and I was the one that was really supporting, maintaining it because, uh, when you talk to the parents, you talk to the staff and the students, it's an important focus. And I have a feeling that if we didn't do this, I think our numbers would not be as good as they are now because there has been a lot of reduced participation, uh, because of the foods.
I thought the other discussion was the kids were throwing out a lot of stuff. And so one thing was they are required to put these things on the trays, and the kids are eating one little thing off it and trashing the rest of it. I, I, I might be wrong, but I thought some, they brought, you brought cookies the one time, the low fat and the regular fat-
Mm-hmm.
To show us the difference.
Right, right.
We, we look at them side by side, you're, everybody's taking the ones with the fat in them, but it, the low fat ones were perfectly good.
Yeah.
It's just, and the kids are gonna do the same thing. So from my standpoint, my guy's just saying, one of the things was for the kids not to buy it, throw half of it away.
Right.
If you could try to get them to eat some of it. I, seventy-six thousand dollars, I don't think we're making money. We're just trying to run it and have it be an effective option. At least that's for me. I just wanted to add what my thought was when I was, we talked about it originally. I thought it was a good idea.
I, I appreciate that. I'm just trying to get my head around this marketing idea. So if, because it, it feels to me that if kids are hungry and if they like the food, they're gonna eat, right? I mean, it's pretty simple. So if we wanna take time and educate them over good nutrition choices and poor nutrition choices, that makes sense. Uh, calling it marketing is very uncomfortable for me because it kind of feels like we're, we're, you know, we're having these rallies and giving out T-shirts or whatever we're doing to, to stimulate them to eat food that they, they may not wanna eat, right? So if they're hungry and the food's good, they're probably gonna eat it. So, uh, maybe, maybe, can we call it education? Can we call it something? Because I liked your explanation, right?
Yes.
About, okay, this, this is a, an option, and this is why you should try it. Um, but the marketing is, it's just very uncomfortable.
I, I will take that in consideration, but I stopped using that word.
Well, let's make sure it is, let's make sure it is education and it's not really marketing. Are we giving you Frisbees or are we, what are we doing? I don't mean to be-
No, that's fine. And it isn't all just marketing. The lady that does it is also culinary, uh, you know, in the preparation of food, and she knows how to follow the regulations, the USDA regulations, the Chartwell's recipes. It's more than just pushing it out. It's an advertising program. There, there's culinary involved. There, there's a lot of regulations involved. And to be honest with you, you know, two or three years ago, the, the national school lunch program changed with all the regulations that came in with the whole grains and the fruits and the vegetables and the low sodium and all. And as the economy also tightened up a little bit, you know, we, we're struggling to, to capture lunches, you know, for students to buy lunches. So this is an effort to try and keep the participation up, keep it rolling, create some excitement, just, uh, uh, have, have a, a program where the kids are aware of what we're doing, uh, in the, in the cafeterias and, and encourage them to buy lunch more often.
Well, if they're not buying lunch, and I really don't wanna make this too long, but if they're not buying lunch, are they bringing lunch or are they just not eating? What's happening?
I, I would think for the most part they're bringing lunch. I'm not sure about the older kids in the high schools. You might see more not eating in the high school, but I think in the elementary school, they're certainly bringing.
But the high school kids buy a lunch, great, a lot of the-
Yeah.
-product because we're freed from the-
Because they buy french fries.
Yeah.
That's beyond-
We're not in the national school lunch department.
I agree, kids go first.
The actual array of menus that lunch-
Yeah, there's a lot of options in the high school, both healthy and, uh, and french fries, too. Are there any other questions on the, on the budget, food service budget?
Skip, do I recall correctly that you are, um, also leaving us at the end of this year?
Yes. Actually, I'm officially retired. I'm now working in a part-time capacity with Chartwell's. And, and since you brought it up, I just wanted to say that, uh, you know, I've been in this district since, uh, nineteen ninety-three when it became part of my region. And, uh, you know, it's, it's, it's been one of my favorite districts. I spend a lot of time here. It's always been one of my favorite districts. It's really been an honor and a privilege to be able to serve Council Rock and, uh, everybody that I've worked for and in the district, you know, worked with in the district since nineteen ninety-three. Everybody's been wonderful, whether it's the board, administration, the staff, the faculty, the parents, the students. I mean, it's been a very pleasant experience, and, and I appreciate that, so thank you very much.
And we appreciate, appreciate your service, too.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Skip.
Two points, and they are related. The, the thing that Skip doesn't tell you, and I think is important to know, is that Chartwell's has provided, um, a place for some of our students, uh, when they graduate, who, who might not have had a good opportunity to work somewhere else. Uh, some of our special needs students have continued in Chartwell's, uh, doing real productive service. It's not an expense to the district. You know, it's a profit-making organization, and they put back in the community by, by doing that. Related to that, I said these are two related. I, I will be abstaining, uh, from this evening's program, and if you notice, I abstain from all conversation about it. Um, my, my son, uh, well, twenty-eight years old, is a casual part-time employee of Chartwell's. And for that reason, I abstain from most items regarding him.
They also give a, uh, scholarship. They have a task given a scholarship. They're not doing it anymore.
We're not able to do that any longer because of PD regulations.
They did it for many years, though.
Yes, they did.
But they do help us out when we have emergencies and we're opening the schools to the public, right?
They were tremendous during Sandy, and you know what? They were one of the first people to-
Everything that we've ever done. So we appreciate that.
That's the thing that isn't spoken enough about with Chartwell's, and that is, in addition to being a fantastic partner in food services, they're just, they step in and do things that are just amazing for us in terms of just helping with those kinds of things when we had to open up the schools for shelters. And they do it quietly and seamlessly and never ask for anything other than a shake of the hand and a thanks as it happens. So that, I've gotta say, it's been a unique and absolute pleasure to work with Chartwell's over my career because that's consistently been what they've done over and over again. It's not just being available for sus- food services and being truly responsive to the needs of kids, but they just are a great organization who are service-oriented for the school district, and that helps on a lot of different levels that are unseen in many ways.
Any other comments? A roll call vote, please?
Dr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Grub?
Uh, I'll abstain, too.
I'll be here. Uh, Mrs. McKessy?
Yes.
Mrs. Sexton?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Block?
Yes.
Mr. Abramson?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Bylick?
Yes.
Go to number three, please, Mrs. Thomas.
I move to award the LPG fueling stations electrical scope bid number fifteen dash thirty-four to Carr and Duff, Inc., at a total cost not to exceed sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars, as contained in the attachment to this agenda and subject to audit.
Second.
Again, for Mr. Reinhardt, questions?
I have a question. I asked it before. I just wanna see where we're at on it. So in the memo, it says that, that due to the extended school year, we're gonna need to do Newtown, uh, in August, and Wrightstown earlier, and so that thing has to be split up. So I didn't know whether the, the number of buses that were involved in this extended school year activity may be small enough so that we didn't actually need to use a new depot. And the only reason I'm raising that is, is there any chance that we need the extra time, that something might go astray? So is it worth, um, opening up that option? Even if we don't have time to rebid it and get it cheaper? I, I just wanna be supportive of that if, if it makes sense.
And I will tell you, Dr. Foster, we wish it was that way. Um, operationally with first student and the buses, in having to use a certain number of buses for extended school year, we have to keep gas-operated buses moving and throughout the summer. Therefore, as they've always have, they've shut Wrightstown Bus Depot down and always used, um, the Newtown Bus Depot. When this was posed to the group, and there's a lot of different people involved in the group that is the planning group on doing this, uh, we put the specs together and we said, this is the way we're gonna do it. I think we were all very comfortable, including Carr and Duff. They were at the pre-bid meeting, understood it, went and, uh, saw locations, they saw where endpoints were and everything. I'm very comfortable that we'll be able to do it. I don't expect to be a problem. If there's a, a problem at all, and it isn't a problem because we're, uh, gonna be working through this, is that the smaller buses from Bluebird will probably not be here the first day of school because they are on Ford chassis, and Ford can't get the chassis to them in time. So we may be going with the small buses, using them and needing to fuel them with diesel. So that's the issue that we have, but we are very comfortable, um, dealing with this. Rhodes Energy has done this several times before, and they are actually gonna be the, um, construction manager, if you will, and make sure all the parties are together. We've already had one team meeting already with schedules and all the people that are involved, when things are coming and everything like that. As soon as this is voted on and email's going out to Rhodes Energy saying, this is the company, let's contact them, make sure everything's on board, but I believe it's gonna be fine.
Thanks.
Well, considering that comment, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Sexton?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Block?
Yes.
Mr. Abramson?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Bylick?
Yes.
Dr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Grub?
Yes.
Mrs. McKessy's not right here, right here. Oh, there she is.
Well, note her stepped out of the room and stepping back in.
I'm waiting for your vote, Kyle.
Please note, Miss McKessy voted in the affirmative. Was that everybody? Fantastic, okay. Uh, if I can get to the end of the next one.
So while you're looking, let me just start at number four and say, um, this started out as forty-some motions, and I wanna thank Doug Taylor and Marie Sides, who worked really hard to consolidate these because they are individual bids and agreements that we talked about in facilities, and they clustered together. I also wanna thank Rick for helping me sort of get this all together in terms of wordsmith and organization. But this, uh, is a different kind of presenting an agenda item for the board, but it just looked too laborious and difficult to have these as individual items. And so, um, this is the way we decided to order it, to put all of these together in one agenda item as a collection of bids, and then we separated them out across three[1639.32] and then we separated them out across three or four different agenda items for the purposes of convenience.
Thank you for that. I, I was hoping you could do the same thing for signatures. Otherwise, I'm going to need Mr. Abramson's handbrake.
I wish I could tell you that we came up with the idea ourselves, but it's Dr. Foster, Mr. Byler will tell you, this is the way they do the MBIT agendas every time, so it's a...
Makes for a quick meeting.
And the IU too.
IU too, yes.
Forty, forty items, one vote.
All one.
So that said, Dr. Foster, would you please read the motion that started two pages ago?
Oh, let me find it. I move to award bid items and approve the associated agreements in items A through R to the vendors listed as contained in the attachments to this agenda, subject to audit.
Second.
Thank you.
Mr. Taylor?
Would you like me to review each one?
No, thank you.
I had a question about... Any questions?
N.
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 Number ten, not ten of them, right?
November. So, so thi- so this is for well water?
Yes, it is. At Wrightstown and Sulfine Stone.
Okay. What do they do? They sample the water and analyze it and...
Yes, they do. They comply with all the state requirements for the testing of domestic water.
Okay.
We still well test the buildings, which is why we test them.
Mr. Taylor, how come you couldn't get any reduction on item O? Say a joke.
Any reduction from zero?
I actually did not get any bids of O, so E-Waste was willing to continue to do it for us at no cost with exception to the CRTs, which you'll see in there, that are now costing every electronic waste service money to dispose of. So there's twenty cents a pound for CRTs.
And my only question in this is, we had great response most recently. Now, obviously, I, I spoke to the fellows from E-Waste. They, they can't do CRTs for free anymore. Will they still permit us one or two electronic collections? Are they, is it still contemplated?
Absolutely. No problem with that and, and what we would do is advertise that if folks were to bring large TVs, that there'd be a flat fee for each TV that they would bring or old computer monitor, large monitors.
They, they have been a marvelous partner to us and this is, if you look this past year...
To our whole community.
Well, to the whole county because the county has done away. That's why we were overflowing.
We frankly don't want the county to come next year.
I understand. I understand, but, but it is amazing. It is a service that, that is just important to us and, and it really does complement the, the environmental service we've done so long, which has saved this district millions of dollars. So...
And we promised Senator Tomlinson we will not get this E-Waste collection on his child next year.
Any other questions? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Grub?
Yes.
Mrs. McKessy?
Yes.
Mrs. Sexton?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Block?
Yes.
Mr. Abramson?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Byler?
Yes.
Dr. Foster?
Yes.
Move to number five, Mr. Grub, please.
Wait a second. Number five, if it definitely add the words, the vendors listed, after the word equipment.
Get that through.
I'm good for that. Number five. I move to award bid fifteen thirty-one grounds maintenance equipment as contained in the attachment to this agenda. Where do you want that at?
Right after.
Equipment.
Equipment.
To the vendors listed.
Start over.
Starting again. Please strike that. I moved to award, I got underway. I moved to award bid fifteen thirty-one grounds and maintenance equipments to the bidders listed as contained in the attachment to this agenda, subject to audit.
Second.
Any questions?
Rick, you okay?
I read what he suggested.
He said vendors, you said bidders. Come on, get it programmed.
Do we need to change that to vendors, Mr. Abramson?
It's, it's fine.
Okay.
Did anybody second it yet?
Yes, it was secondary.
Would you really, I'll change it. I will.
No, we're good, we're good. Any other ques- questions for Mr. Taylor? Okay, noting no objections, I'd ask the secretary to record the vote as passing with unanimous consent, please. And we will move to number six, Mrs. Sexton.
I move to approve independent service contracts A through C to the vendors listed as contained in the attachments to this agenda, subject to audit.
Second. Questions for Mr. Taylor? Again, each of these were discussed at our facilities meeting recently.
May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Byler?
Mr. Byler?
Mr. Byler?
Yes.
Um, Dr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Grub?
Yes.
Um, Mrs. McKessy?
Yes.
Mrs. Sexton?
Yes.
Mr. Block?
Yes.
Mr. Abramson?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
You didn't call me.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Uh, we're moving on to number seven. Mrs. McKessy, please.
I move to award the summer capital project bid items and approve the associated agreements for items A through F to the vendors listed as contained in the attachments to this agenda, subject to audit.
Second. One more time, Mr. Taylor. You've got some more to go after this.
Yeah, what I'd like to suggest on these bids is bid number four, the North and South Wireless Infrastructure and the South Auditorium Projector. Based on discussions that we had at the facilities committee meeting last week, would like to suggest that we remove the projector portion of this project and reconsider that as some other type of project at a later date.
Bid alternate on that bid, correct?
It, it's a breakout number in their bid, so we're able to remove it. It's, what it would do to item D is reduce the cost from three-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand five-hundred-and-six to two-hundred-and-forty-three thousand eighteen dollars. It reduces it by ninety-five thousand four-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars.
Do we need to amend the motion, Ed?
No.
Okay.
Are there any other questions on this?
Yes. Do you know the total amount that these projects add up to, for summer projects add up to?
Better than it was before.
Yes. Actually, we're now better, as Mark said, than we were before, so...
And I apologize. I know you guys talked about this facilities and I was with a graduating trial.
Fifty cents under, fifty cents under three million dollars.
Because I wasn't there. Okay, thank you for the abuse, everyone.
We're now about a hundred thousand under where we were before, right? So, um, total project with contingencies, we're at about two million nine-hundred thousand dollars. The estimate in November was, was three million, so that does include some value-added work that we did include in this project, so...
I'd like to talk about item C. I, first of all, I didn't respond to the email you sent me, Doug, and I, I apologize for that and I appreciate the time that was put out in this memo for at least some of my questions. And I just want to understand the differential referring to the bid alternate for removing the, um, all, all the trailers this year as compared to waiting and removing a second set of eight, two in each school next year. So what I think this reads is, if we wait until 2016 to demolish the additional eight, it's going to cost us a hundred-and-thirteen thousand five-hundred-and-fifty. If we demolish them this year, it's going to cost us a hundred-and-seven thousand one-fifty-one. Am I reading that correctly?
Yes, you are.
And are there additional costs above and beyond that in maintaining the, um, keeping the walkways intact and things like that that we can save? Are there any additional savings that aren't reported here? Let's put it that way.
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Anything else, Mr. Byler?
No, I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Taylor? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Block?
Yes.
Mr. Abramson?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Byler?
Yes.
Dr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Grub?
Yes.
Mrs. McKessy?
Yes.
Mrs. Sexton?
Yes.
Doug, thanks for taking care of that one.
You're welcome.
I'm going to go to number eight, Mr. Abramson, please.
I move to award bid number fifteen dash twenty-five to Element Environmental Solutions, Inc. At a total cost not to exceed fifty-two thousand one-hundred-and-sixteen dollars, subject audit.
Second. This is worthy of just one second of overview, Doug.
Yeah, sure. This is the professional firm that will address our AHTIRI booklets. They perform the walkthrough of all the facilities.
So define AHTIRI for those that wouldn't necessarily know that immediately.
It's, it's the Asbestos Hazard Emergency Response Act. And in response to the hazardous materials that were installed in many buildings up to around the early nineteen-seventies, we're required to identify those materials, record those, and keep those in each school. So if there is any work taking place, those working on the building should take a look at those catalogs, try to identify any potential issues before they dig in and are, you know, fairly notified of the issue. So, in saying that, we've worked with several different firms over the past couple of years. You will notice on this recommendation that Spott Stevens and McCoy was the actual low professional proposal provided. However, I'm not suggesting going with them. I'm suggesting going with Element because of the response to the RFP. And basically, the manpower that Spott Stevens and McCoy is now showing us has greatly diminished from where the firm used to be in terms of this service. They still offer many other services in the proposal. They didn't list a project manager and assistant project manager. They listed two people where the other firms all listed five, six people, certified industrial hygienist, all the people that we need. The other firm did not. I reached out to them. I expressed that concern and I said that in the future, if you kind of regroup and collect these folks again, we'd certainly like to consider working with you and there was really little argument back. Again, it's a professional service. We saw the numbers from three firms. Unfortunately, the, the dynamics of that firm have changed since we put it out to bid. But in addition to the AHTIRI work, they will also be doing radon testing in all the schools, which, which we do about every three years. They'll be looking at our MSDS information and updating all of those catalogs throughout the district. Emergency spill response for any above-ground tanks, they'll make sure that we have that. They'll provide our men AHTIRI training so that all of our mechanics are aware of what they should be looking for as they work throughout the schools. So there's a lot of things that are being provided over the next three years by this firm.
And all of these are federally required to have, store, and...
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Questions for Mr. Taylor? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Grub?
Yes.
Mrs. McKessy?
Yes.
Mrs. Sexton?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Block?
Yes.
Mr. Abramson?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Byler?
Yes.
Dr. Foster?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Do that quicker than you might have thought, huh? Well done in the last facilities committee, committee meeting. Uh, we're going to move to the solicitor's report. Mr. Cox, please.
There was an executive session before today's meeting on the issue of personnel and also regarding the matter that's currently in litigation and that's all I have as a report, Mr. Block.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Uh, we're going to move to board items. Is there any old business for discussion?
I have some old business.
Please.
I want to remind everybody that the personnel, I mean, the personnel polit- the policy committee, not personnel and policy, policy committee has had a, uh, an open invitation for people to send in their policies that would like revision and we were going to take those up in the fall. So get those on over. So, I mean, as you know, we have a lot of them. One thing that I'd been thinking of doing is reaching out to PSBA. I, I'd like to know which of our policies have content that, that literally in the school code were required to have the policy. And I would love it if those policies were annotated in some way to say, hey, by the way, why does this policy exist? Because it has to. That would allow us to know which, at least some of them, we can't touch. And we may have to review them from time to time, but they just have to sit there. So that's something I wanted to do. If you guys have any, and I would like to take on the meeting policy at some point. I know that, that Jerry had sent me a suggestion and Denise as well, so mail them on over. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Foster.
If I could too, just a whole business item. We have sixty-five responses to the resolution piece. So I'll make sure the board sees that tomorrow and then with your permission, we'll send it off to the breakfast, let's quote state legislature.
Could I make a comment about that?
Absolutely.
Because I didn't get a chance to respond to an email that we received and I just want to reiterate, there's no attack on the pension, at least, I don't think from any of us, but, you know, we all know, we can only speak for ourselves. There's no attack on the pension system. It's, it's a request that the folks that made the problem fund the problem instead of turning to us and our community to fund it. There have been various ideas in the past such as severance taxes on natural gas or what have you. The money, at the end of the day, needs to come from somewhere and right now, a lot of it is coming from us. And I think when we ask for some solutions, we're asking that this, a lot of this burden be taken off of us because when we send that money away, we can't buy technology, we can't buy textbooks, we can't get more teachers, we can't repair our buildings. That, that's what it is, I think. It's, it's not an attack on, on the pension system.
Any other old business? Any new business?
I have two items I'd like to propose for discussion for new business.
Sure.
And I'll switch my sequence from the last discussion, but I did circulate an email I received today from the president of the Quaker Town School Board for information and I think it, it is worth discussion. Now, I'll say that I am not endorsing it. I would just like to discuss it. So the, it was, I think in the Bus County Current Times today that the Quaker Town School District passed a resolution that in essence is going to take their Peasars payment and put it in escrow account. So they're basically saying, until you fix this problem, we're not sending you the money. I don't know if it's lawful. I have, my personal feelings are, it's, it sounds very defiant and it kind of draws a line in the sand. Part of me really likes that, right? Let's, let's solve this problem today or I'm not going to pay it, but we have an obligation and I also don't believe in not paying our obligations, so I'd like to know how the rest of the board feels about it.
Maybe before we got into that, it might be interesting to hear if there was a legal opinion from Mr. Cox and then potentially a financial opinion from Mr. Reinhardt. And I'm not, I don't put John Spott's up. Something you need to research.
I'm, um, first of all, I haven't looked in detail at what Quaker Town proposes to do. I also haven't looked at the law in great detail recently with respect to the, the respective school districts' obligations to fund their, their pension obligations. On first blush, what, what I understand being proposed that that school district doesn't strike me as something that's clearly lawful. And again, I don't mean to offer an opinion as to what another school district is doing. But I, I would say on first blush, um, a, a Council Rock decision to not pay or not fund a statutory obligation strikes me as legally problematic. I also suspect that there are potential penalties and interest on payments that aren't timely made, although I don't know that for sure. I wouldn't be surprised to, to learn that. I also think that this sort of circles back to advice I've given to this school board before, which is that this, this school district and all school districts are, are creatures of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And the rights and obligations of this school district flow from, and flow, flow out of a statutory grant of authority or, or statutory obligations imposed by, by the Commonwealth. And, and so, you know, this, this school district is a creature of the Commonwealth, has to follow the Commonwealth's laws and, and I suspect probably with respect to it, to its pension obligations, has to do it in that arena as well. On first blush, Mr. Block, that's my, my view of that issue.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Mr. Reinhardt?
My initial reaction would be if funds are not going to Peasars, there could be a deduction from our basic ed subsidy where the state would withhold our money anyway. Another area, especially in the months of June, should we not be transferring the required amounts that could hold up some retirement calculations for our retired staff? And there'd be unintended consequences that were causing staff members that are retiring a problem. Those are two of my concerns and I also am concerned, should we not be remitting the money on a timely basis? I believe there could be some type of financial penalty that we would have to pay.
If I could too, just very quickly, I like the idea of trying to get people to move up there too and I do think that we've had plenty of conversations with them. But I, I want, I think one of the concerns I have is that we owe four million eight, four-point-eight million dollars. We don't owe two-point-whatever. We expect reimbursement from the Commonwealth to, to add half of that. But if we were to escrow that, we'd be escrowing the amount of money we owe, which is four-point, what, four-point?
I'm not sure. I'm following your numbers per se, so...
What do we owe? We don't owe, we're, our budget and the Council Rock contribution is only half of what we owe.
Oh, you're talking about what the increase is.
But what we owe without the reimbursement, we just assume the reimbursement will come, but we actually owe four million plus for next year, correct?
Yes, what, what I think they're talking about is the payment is due in June for the first quarter of 2015. So it's going to be, our wages being, let's say it's twenty-nine million dollars times twenty-one percent. So we owe, come on, help me out, five-point-eight million dollars, five-point-eight million dollars. And what Mark's saying is that we should be getting returned two-point-nine of that, but that's probably our liability, about five-point-eight for the quarter. But I could see if we're not making payment, that people's credits will not be taken either and I'm afraid that some retirees may not be getting there.
Mark and Joy might have to stay?
Just asking.
I really don't want Joy calling me every day, because she's not getting her pension.
Now, you just made Dr. Frazier nervous.
We, um, we direct the Bobby Garnish Paris, we...
Okay, thank, thank you, gentlemen, that gives us, I think, some good context for that discussion, does anybody have any comments?
Did you have another one, you said it, oh?
No, I'll just say that I do think back to, it was probably nineteen ninety-two or so, and it was one of the periods that, um, a budget hadn't passed, and it was well into the summer, and I was a constable at the time, and I was working with a bunch of state troopers, and the state troopers weren't getting paid, and they weren't very happy, and they started pulling over state representatives coming from Harrisburg.
Oh, you don't get to do that.
We should be able to do, I thi- uh, first, let's propose that, but, um, things got done very quickly, and, and I do, uh, again, I do like the sense of urgency that this brings, but I do also have the concerns, but that's, that's my comment.
Is the sense of urgency for the Senate bill to be passed, is that what they're...
Well, in this case, in this case, they're endorsing Senate Bill One, right?
Yes.
Uh, I, but, I don't know if I take that same position, I, I haven't reviewed Senate Bill One, I saw some of the, uh, the overview of it, but the issue is, let's just get them to move forward, let's, let's do it now, and let's face it, if, if a majority of the school districts in the Commonwealth withhold their, withheld their funding, this would probably be done by Wednesday, right? So, um, but, look, I, I don't know if we wanna put at risk pensioners taking, getting their payments, new calculations being done, certainly not penalties and interest, um, but, uh, it's worth discussion.
Does anybody have any thoughts they wanna add?
I haven't had a chance to read it all, so I'm just, you know, maybe we can discuss it in the future, so...
Uh, Mark, do you have a second one, Mr. Byler, a sec?
Do you have one on this topic?
No, not on this.
Okay, do, uh, you wanna bring up?
I do, so the other thing, I just wanna throw off our conversation is, uh, none of us can attend the event for Joy and, um, Mark, I don't believe, right, it's coming up on the third, because, uh, I'm sorry, I can't, there's another event we can't, I can't attend, because it's June, it's, uh, it's on a school board night.
Yeah, I see, it's June fourth.
Yeah, I apologize, um, and I'd just like to throw a discussion out there about looking to change our meetings to another night, if it's, uh, Thursdays seem to conflict with so many things, uh, Wednesdays are generally better nights, and I don't know where, uh, the historically Thursdays came from, but again, I just wanted to throw it out for conversation, if there's anyone else interested in having that talk.
Wednesday, Thursday, doesn't matter.
Okay, so I make a motion.
I like it, man of action.
There are township meetings on Wednesday night, in North Hampton Township, so I don't know how often members like Doug and things have to go to those township meetings, you ever have, you go to township meetings, do you go to Plannix Town, or do you go to...
No, I go to Plannix Mission and supervise.
And what night do you go supervise, which is Wednesday in North Hampton?
Tuesdays on Wednesday. When, I don't know when the, when the Borough uses this, honestly, I haven't been attentive in months.
I would just say, it, it is an interesting notion, but for the time being, given where we are on the calendar, um, and, and change, uh, at least there are two board members, at least in the fall, so, change, and changing, we've already advertised to the balance of the year, that's the point, Mark, you've already advertised our meeting for the balance of the year.
I have to check on committee meetings, I'm still struggling with where we went with that.
Are you speaking moving committee meetings?
But yes, the regular, the regular Thursday meetings have been, are out and advertised, but that's just a matter of re-advertising.
Look, personally, I would like to move the meetings to Wednesday, that's my personal, uh, opinion, Thursday's conflict with so many things, I think, and a lot of folks' schedules, there's a lot of things scheduled for Thursday, um, and I just wanted to spark that conversation. Mr. Klein responded, I did not, uh, communicate to the Board, there are some members, I, I threw this out to Mr. Klein, uh, being one of them, and, and he did comment that we'd have to start at the next school calendar, because it's already set for the year, I completely understand, but again, I, we can't have a conversation about something like this just amongst ourselves, so I thought we would have it here.
Doesn't matter to me.
Okay, so let's move it to Wednesday.
Yeah, I, I would say this for those of us who travel, having it closer to the end of the week is much easier, uh, year and a half into this, I've, I've managed my schedule around it and, and other things, it would be tough to, to rearrange life around it, so while I appreciate that Wednesday's a better day for you, Thursday's a better day for me. It just is.
Well, no, for a year and a half, I was in Belgium every other week, and I would get back for this meeting, and it would, it would screw me up, and I'm also concerned that if we were to have someone join the Board who had younger children, sometimes the religious schools have Wednesday evening, which would be a child care shoot for someone, uh, I don't know what else happens on Thursday evenings, I don't know.
Seinfeld's not on anymore?
Yeah, but it's on TV.
Well, I know Mark was, it's always been a big bang problem, it was a big bang problem for Mark.
I have DDR, Jerry.
DDR, yeah, that works.
Rick, you had some more new business?
Just Board comment.
Oh, well, I'll get to that at the end, any more new business? I had just a couple things I wanna bring up, uh, Deb Helen men- mentioned it, public comment, uh, the, the possible idea of a track in Newtown Middle, uh, I have received many emails, I know the Board has, almost exclusively from the Sulfine Stone PTO, I would expect that that's gonna start to come from more feeder schools, uh, rather than discuss it here, though I would suggest, I think next Facilities meeting, we're talking about, uh, the Newtown Middle School.
We have, um, the architects.
Yeah, and, and I know that there's a lot of questions and, and challenges around already spending too much there, and I respect that, but, uh, what I, what I think that might be a good venue to discuss, that there's a lot of issues around it, um, but, but I think that's something that I've got enough communication on, that it's worth, worth talking about, and relative to the number of kids that use a track versus maybe other big expenditures in school, it's just worth having a conversation, not taking a position, so, if, you know, I know you've got some, some preparation to do. Is it?
That's, that's, so I went back, and Doug and I talked about that, I, I don't know if we wanna put it on one of, you know, these agendas, because we have the architects coming in. It, it does seem like the appropriate place, I mean, maybe, Doug, did you gather some information?
I've just got a lot of comment about when's the right time to have the discussion.
Sure, I mean, I, I don't think it's a bad time, only because Dewey will be there, our, our representative's gonna speak to the budget as well at that, at that meeting, so maybe it's the time to discuss it, um...
Can you send any information that you have to the Board? I, I know you had some...
I could put something together and share it with the Board.
I, I don't mean kill yourself, I just mean for people to decide if it's something they wanna look at or not look at.
I'll, I'll put something together and share it with you in advance of the eleventh, that way we'll be able to streamline it a bit, perhaps.
Miss Sexton?
So I also have gotten a lot of these letters, and, and I have sympathy for this, because, um, for me, track and anything like that, swimming, track, these are lifelong activities that people can engage in and become healthy from participating in, and so I think that they're, um, they're, they're good things that we wanna support, and so tonight I came, and I, you know, bothered Doug, and I said, so, so, what, why do we get rid of this, and how much does it cost? And just in general, only in a ballpark, not research, pretty wide, it's about a million dollars, it's just a lot of money, but it, it's something I do wanna participate in a conversation about, and, and I hope for all the people that wrote to us, you hear me talking to you now, that we are gonna look at this, I'm glad we're gonna take another look, it is an expensive add-on, and so much involved in it.
But what I like about the conversation, and I actually, in responding to some of the residents, used Patty's words, um, because she's advocated for a pool that's out in the past, and I think this opens up a good conversation about how we spend the community's money, and the people who are interested in these things get a chance to come out and, and be heard, so, you know, I'm expecting that this'll, will be a very positive conversation, so I, to, to your point, Mr. Kessie, when to have it, don't know, but I think it's, it needs to be had.
Can, can I, I ju- I just would like to say, since we threw out the million dollars, I'd like to be clear that that's not just the, the track proper, there's a lot of preparation work that goes into making it ready for the track, so all of the work that has to happen, stormwater management, which is a big one.
And that's the real track, not the gravel track?
That's a, I, I honestly, if we're going to go with the track, would recommend a paved track surface, not the high maintenance of a...
Doug, you would look to do a track, not dissimilar from ones in South?
Correct, it wouldn't have to have the all-weather surface, you wouldn't have to pave D areas, there's a lot of things we could look at to reduce the cost, but it's generally gonna be in that seven hundred and fifty thousand, nine hundred thousand dollar range because of all of the prep work, we can talk about different track systems, but the actual, it's about forty-five thousand square feet of track area, um, alone, so there's a lot of area that you're working with.
When we, when we made it, when we did Turf the Rock, when we turfed north, did we include the track as part of that project, because the whole project was seven hundred fifty?
No.
I, I was not...
No, 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 no.
Present for that, no.
In fact, the, the summer before, we had reapplied a conditioned surface to the top of the track, and that created a little bit of a problem within that work to go over top and to bridge that track.
No, I was just, the order, the order of progress was, was confusing to me.
But I'll prepare some additional information and share it with you, so we'll have something more to talk about.
So again, I, I wanna be clear, though, for those watching, we are not proposing or suggesting building a track, but it's a good conversation to have about how we spend our money. One other piece of new business for me, I had sent a note to the Board, trying to get a date for a Board retreat, uh, in July, um, uh, to, to kind of align on our priorities for the new s- s- school year, um, I, that is not, that, that July eleventh date is not gonna work for everybody, so I am scrubbing the calendar to see when we can make that happen, uh, with the hope that we can do it a little bit earlier. Uh, that's all the new business, I have, anybody else have any new business? We'll go to the Committee reports, Ms. Brooks, anything from academic standards?
And notice that our next meeting is two weeks from tonight, June fourth, and we'll be talking about professional development, the meeting will be a little bit shorter, because I believe we're having a reception that night, uh, for the retirees as well.
That's great, thank you. Uh, Ms. McKessy, Facilities, I know we did most of the work tonight.
Uh, we did do most of the work tonight, so just to let everybody know, that the last Facilities meeting last Thursday, um, as part of the capital planning process, the Board had asked the administrators, um, to give us a sense of capacity and do a capacity analysis, um, particularly in light of removing two modulators from every school building, um, we had administrators from Maureen Welsh, Newtown, and Holland, um, we are going to continue down that path, we are doing schools, they, Doug, those dates are still, I mean, the schools that we are revisiting on those dates are still to be determined based upon schedules, we're not hard and fast on...
I, I think, Joy, maybe you recall the four, I know, Rolling Hills, Hillcrest...
Sulfine Stone.
And...
Churchill?
And Churchill, thank you.
And Churchill, those next meetings, thank you.
So that is June eleventh, and then July, I don't think we have that date actually ironed out, but July is slated for Rolling Hills, um, Wrightstown, we've already done well.
July would be Wrightstown, Goodnow, and Richborough.
Right, okay, so that's what's coming up ahead, um, so that next meeting will be June eleventh.
Thank you, Ms. McKessy, uh, Mr. Grubb, anything from Finance?
I'm having a mental block, Bob, do we, where do we go, gotta be Budget.
Yeah, no, nothing going on.
Next Thursday will be devoted to Budget, and there could be a few other items that we had on, that, uh, Mr. Grubb and I will be speaking about either tonight or tomorrow morning, and you'll have an agenda hopefully tomorrow afternoon.
Dr. Frazier, Mr. Byler, anything, I'm sorry, I'm, Bruni and slip, I missed a big meeting last week, and look what happens, uh, Dr. Foster, Mr. Byler, anything from MBIT?
Uh, so we met on May eleventh, and, uh, Mr. Byler and I were both there, we did, this was something we do every year, we have an award ceremony, and so there's, um, uh, the, the children participate in contests, there's district, there's state, and there's even, we even had a child win at Nationals, and, and as, uh, the head administrator, Mrs. Strauss, describes it, most, uh, career and technical schools are lucky if they have a child win in these competitions, uh, in the district competitions, we had at least six first places, and they're in many different categories, prepared speech, which I obviously could, you know, that would have been, uh, anyway, job interview, IT, early education, cosmetology, computer applications, and then state firsts, we had in IT, prepared speech, health, and then we had a second place in a national automotive technology competition that was held in, uh, New York City, um, so that was pretty cool, to have a, someone make it all, all that way, the, the item that I remember most in the meeting was we had, uh, a discussion led by Mr. Byler on the need to RFP insurance and, uh, our solicitor, um, so that was a, a good, uh, discussion that we had, one, uh, a kind of discussion we have here from the time of talk, but it is good to, to go through your contracts and, uh, make sure that you're getting the best value for the dollar, that's all I had. Great job, thank you. Thank you.
Big news, sad news at the IU?
Well...
Well, big, I guess, happy news.
I actually participated remotely on the election night, um, in the Bucks County IU Board meeting, so at seven o'clock, I went and sat in my car, and called into the meeting, and participated in the entire meeting, and, uh, we approved sadly Dr. Galasso's retirement, and we approved, um, Mark Hoffman as our new executive director, and it was, uh, he's gonna be a great director, I have great faith in him, and I think he's gonna do really well, and, um, good future for the idea.
Great, send him our best of luck wishes. Okay, we're gonna move to our second round of public comment, is there...
When's our Board, is Board comment after?
Yeah, I'm gonna have Board comment at the end before we close, uh, is there any other public comment? Yeah, I was at the right myself.
Nancy Carroll, Newtown Borough, um, I've been coming to Board member, meetings and speaking since the early nineties, I have a record, just like you have a record, the public knows where I stand, um, I have, I'm passionate, I try to be respectful, and, um, I, there's been a lot of things that I've advocated for over the years, uh, right now, I'm for lowering the cost per student, I spent five years advocating for a second high school, I was on the Chancellor Reuse Committee, where we saved this as the administration building, I was on the Ch- Chancellor Legacy Committee, where we got all the pictures around to keep the legacy of Chancellor, I was like, on a committee, uh, to award the World War II vets who left during their high school years, to get their diplomas suit rather than later, um, I've been for getting students out of trailers, right now, I'm for an open technology committee that reports the award and includes the integration of technology in its charter, I'm opposed to a K four, five, six grade configuration, I'm opposed to PTOs donating technology devices and then being charged with the needed infrastructure when other PTOs can just donate their devices because they happen to be the ones that were renovating, uh, I am for protecting people's right to speak and support whoever they please, uh, in the last election that was brought up, there was a Board member for, one against, uh, at that election, I went over it just to see what was going on, because everybody was talking about it, um, I am for people who have concealed weapons to, uh, permit to abide by the law, I'm against concealed weapons or any other weapons being in this building unless done by police and law enforcement, as was done tonight, although they were not concealed, you know who I am, you know what I stand for, I don't need others to speak for me, I write to the newspaper, I put letters in, I go to your committee meetings, I speak, I speak at this mic, I've spoken to many of you, I am for people choosing whoever they want, who is like-minded to them, to be the candidate for supervisor or state rep or school board, and for them to participate in electoral process, thank you.
Any further public comment? Okay, we will move to Board comment. Dr. Foster?
I do have, thank you, uh, I have a comment, it's, 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 uh, you know, elections are really hard, I remember, uh, when we had the, um, referendum on the tax, that a lot of things happen in elections that are crazy, I remember these signs that said it was a thirty-four percent tax increase, I knew that every single retired person was going to end up with a tax decrease, so, you know, was the sign right for them? Not really, and then I found myself in front of the polls, knowing that if it passed, my taxes were gonna go up, and I had people yelling... And I had people yelling at me in front of voters saying that I was a liar. It was very stressful. But I didn't come in here and talk about people yelling at me and calling me a liar because the board is trying to get work done. And things happen outside of this room in elections. We don't control that. I don't think they should come in here. It makes doing this work hard. So even though it may feel good to talk about things that folks perceive as being difficult and bad that occurred outside of here, it doesn't help our work to bring them here in high energy and high heat. Because we spent hundreds of thousands of dollars tonight. We had to look at contracts and ask questions. It doesn't help to start the night with these comments about things that are beyond our control and don't help the work of the board. So I wish that people would think about keeping these worlds separate. And when things get too crazy, I would ask that we stop the comments so that we can do our work. So that's my comment. Thanks.
Straverton?
Other comment, I just want to say that it was nice to see that Joy and Mark so often give praise and awards to others, receive the citation from the State House of Representatives. And so, Deco, what was said already, the board also is very proud of you and wish you well. Mentioned the Quaker Town School District and in the paper today, mentioned that they have a full-day kindergarten, implementing a full-day kindergarten. In fact, just recently, a reporter contacted me because a certain superintendent mentioned that, I guess, that I was a navigator for full-day kindergarten.
Will Smith.
Someone else had your name. My point is that hopefully slowly, other school districts will be moving to implement full-day kindergarten. I know some have, they backed away, they're going toward it. I believe the time is right for us to start thinking about it because of our renovations, our facilities, changes that we're making. Big things are going to be happening in the next few years and we can incorporate a full-day kindergarten program into Council Rock. So even though I won't be on this board, I am asking that this board in the future consider implementing a full-day kindergarten program, look at, see what other school districts are doing. And I believe it will be feasible to do in Council Rock. So that's my hope and I hope you take it seriously.
Mr. Foster?
I wasn't going to do this, but I'll make it really short. Congratulations on your election on Tuesday, having won both sides. You will now be unopposed in the fall. I'd also like to compliment Mr. Tate, who also ran unopposed and then took both the Democrat and Republican endorsement in Newtown. And as Mr. Ray Brumson has chosen not to run, I believe, unless something goes a kilter, of which I would not understand, this board will have the pleasure of Mr. Ed Tate's company beginning December with the December organization. So congratulations to Dr. Foster and to Mr. Tate, or is it condolences?
So I had public comment, that's all right?
Yes, please.
All right, so, tonight I was the subject of a lot of discussion. I can only say this, when I became a board member in Council Rock, I did not give up my rights as a United States citizen to participate in the electoral process. And that's what I am doing. Now, why would a person put themselves in this position of going against a sitting board member? I don't do it out of animosity for Mr. Grup. I don't do it like that at all. I've worked with him for 11 years. I feel bad about a lot of things that went on with this board over the past three years. I feel very sad about some things. I hold schools in high regard and high respect. I think that Council Rock deserves school directors that do not carry their weapons into the schools. You carried your weapon into the schools. Doesn't matter when you did it. When you knew in your mind that you had your gun with you, you could have walked out of that building, gotten in your car, taken it home where it belonged, come back, visited the school and done what you wanted. You made a choice to show your weapon to an employee. I believe Council Rock deserves better. I have no choice but to work for a candidate that can give me that. I wish you hadn't made the choice you made. And I wish that people here had behaved better around this issue. Too much went on. If a child brings a gun, toy, plastic into these buildings, all of us immediately, immediately get an email telling us what went on. I never found out the details of what happened in your situation until I went and asked the district attorney to tell me. I never got a full and a complete calculation of what happened and why. I wish I did. I wish I did. It would be so much easier for me. These are my last six months of 12 years of being here. It would be so much easier for me to go along, to get along. But it's not, it's not in my morals to do that. So, why do I have to be a board member that has to stand up for what's good? I can't imagine that there's any count sitting in this room now or in the district that wants people to carry weapons.
Patty, I think, I think you're starting editorialize a little bit.
Well, that, isn't it all an editorial? What happened to that microphone earlier in this meeting was entirely an editorial.
And it's the public, it's the public and we deserve to hear that.
A young lady from Wrightstown stood up and complained about my behavior at the polls. She was never at my polls. I have no idea where or how she got her information. All I know is the only reason I'm doing this is because I believe Council Rock deserves a school director who has not carried a weapon.
This is a personal attack, Mr. President, I'm going to let it cease.
So I, I would say this, to Dr. Foster's point about keeping this separate, folks, folks deserve the right and have the right to their own opinions. We are public officials here. I would prefer we don't bring it in, when we do bring it in, the public has the right to comment.
And I have the right to comment, that's for it. You allowed so much comment there. And I'm not even addressing all of it.
All right, let's, let's, let's not, let's not, let's not have a debate here.
I have to have an opportunity to speak for a moment. It is only fair. Mrs. Sexton?
And make a quick, Jerry, I don't want this to turn into a.
Absolutely. In August of 2012, while returning from the range, which is licensed by the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms and Explosives, I had wanted to go see Holland Elementary School, which was closed to the public and under construction. The only access to that building at that time was over a dirt road. It was unoccupied, it was supposed to be unoccupied. I, I permitted you to speak without interruption. Okay? Thank you. I went to visit the building. I did not leave my weapon in the car by mistake. I carry a weapon because I am licensed, I am permitted to carry a weapon in most places within the state. I'm not permitted to get, I am licensed and to carry a weapon in 38 states. As I was touring the building, which I didn't realize, I was supposed to be outside, one of our employees called to me and said, come with me, I want to show you what's inside. As I walked around, it occurred to me that I had not left my weapon in the car. At that point, being self-conscious of it, I had mentioned to an employee, I have a weapon and I motioned towards it. Did I show it, did I not show it? I don't recall. For the purposes of conversation, I'll say they saw it. Never left the holster. At that point, I went to leave. At that point, the person said, well, let me show you some more things. They showed me more things and I left. That was the incident. What came after that was a report through the district that went to the police department. The fellow who was here tonight is Lieutenant, was Lieutenant Clark at the time. I had heard that there was discussion about this. And I had approached Lieutenant Clark and I said, you're going to receive a report about me carrying a weapon at a school. Lieutenant Clark said, when I get that note, that report, I'll call you. He called a few days later. He had already spoken with people who were witnesses. And I went in and spoke to him. That was the extent of any interaction with anyone I had on. Thereafter, due to political pressure, I believe, by two sitting board members, maybe one, but maybe two, it was pushed up to the DA's office. The DA, who I had never met until that point, even as he worked on it, reviewed the issue and decided that the circumstances involved in the case fell under categorization, which relates to the charges, potential for charges or to claims for charges, to be what is legally called de minimis, which is a Latin word which basically equates to trivial. In looking at the case, he decided that to prosecute the case would not be in the interest of the district, of me, of anyone. That my carrying a weapon on the school grounds was, if anything, stupid. And I'll give that. He, your, your compatriots in opposition to me have used, have quoted a phrase that the district attorney said, which was maybe in a show of misplaced macho, which is macho is never something I have been accused of in any regard. And that, and so in that case, he cited the law and he chose to take no action. I had never spoken with the district attorney at that point. On October 9th, you sent a note to the district attorney, a letter to the district attorney, saying, why was he cutting an exception to the law? He wrote you a four-page, very polite response, very comprehensive, referring to many portions of the law. You, in October, chose to share that memo with discreet persons in the community and on the, and in the board and never had a conversation with me about having received the memo. Thereafter, you and Mrs. Heenan became engaged in this notion that.
Mr. Grup, I'm sorry, but.
No, I'm sorry, this was an attack. And spent four months of the board's time worried that a person, not only me, but any person with a concealed weapon could be in this building. That's the whole realm of everything. You have said, and you said the other day, all I want from Jerry is an apology and this will all go away.
I never said that.
Well, that was reported to me. That was what was reported to me.
Never said that.
All right, guys, so listen, if you want, if you guys want to debate this outside.
The other story is.
Jerry, Mr. Grup, no, I'm sorry.
The other story is, it was stupid on my part and I don't believe, and it certainly had no malice when it, when it was done. I would like to be able to think that you could say the same thing, but I don't believe you can.
I'm going to adjourn this meeting.